You have a dark, black heart. Far and brown she left for rock and roll star. We talk, we cry, we got so loud, drove around all night in your car. Color me foolish, color me weird, color me with your love.
I'm here.
Councilmember Barry.
Hello.
Here. Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Here, on the phone.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Okay. Are there any council comments? I've just got one or two quick things. I just wanted to note that the police department had their annual awards banquet on Friday night. Among the, I guess, about close to 100 people who were there, which was, I think, the largest turnout ever, Councilmember Wright and I were honored to be there, as were the city manager and the deputy city manager. And it was a very nice event. The chief did a great job. And I think everybody enjoyed themselves. And a number of the members of the department were honored for some pretty outstanding service in 2008. And I just wanted to say that it was a wonderful event, and it was good to see the department recognizing its own in such a fine fashion. And I also just wanted to point out a figure that I saw in my COG board packet for the board meeting this week. We got a copy of the third quarter financial report, and it was interesting to me that the -- I always knew that the COG budget was about like the city's budget. The COG budget is about $28 or $29 million per year, and their general fund balance increased to $9 million and small change in the third quarter. So they're not -- COG isn't exactly like the city government, but it was interesting to find that a public entity that had the same budget had the same or more fund balance. So I just thought that was worth noting.
How many people were there?
About the same as the city, about 125, full-time. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to let the community know that Ward 4 is hosting a party at the Ponty Branch Pool this Sunday from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and we invite everyone to come. We will still be charging the general admission at the door, but we do hope everyone will be able to come and join us at the pool. Thank you very much. And of course, we extend this invitation to all the councilmembers, especially to make sure that you're there to see your constituents at the pool. Again, it was 3:00 to 5:00 on Sunday.
Anybody else? Okay. The next item is -- there are no additional agenda items, just a quick agenda scheduling update. The meeting a week from tonight, May 18th. We have a resolution adopting the strategic plan, and we have the first reading ordinances of the adopting the various budget ordinances and pay plans. And the second reading of those the following Tuesday, May 26th. And then on Monday, June 1st, I would point out to my colleagues that we have discussion of legislative action requests to be submitted to MML. So if you have any input on that, any ideas, be sure to get them to, I assume, Suzanne Ledlow in the remainder of this month, because we'll need to discuss those on the first and be ready to submit those to MML later in June. And the next item on our agenda is adoption of minutes. We have minutes from March 9th. Would somebody like to move adoption of those?
Move.
Second.
If you'd been moving second, and all in favor, we say aye.
Aye.
Compose.
Aye.
The minutes are adopted. Oh, and hearing Councilmember Sniffer pipe up from the microphone, from the phone, whatever it is. Am I correct in thinking that you may be rejoining us in a week? Is that possible? Councilmember Sniffer?
What?
Maybe not.
Wake up.
What happens is I have to push the mute button to on and off, so I don't create a lot of background noise. And I just realized you asked a question while I was trying to get the mute button on. Sorry about that.
I said, "Am I correct in thinking that you may be rejoining us in a week?"
Actually, I will not be able to be there next Monday night.
Okay. Never mind. Sorry, I brought it up. Next item is the public comment period. For anybody who would like to make any comments on anything that is not on the agenda or anything that is on our work session agenda, if you have any comments to make at the budget public hearing, or any of the regular resolutions or ordinances in the regular meeting, please hold your comments for that time. But anybody who'd like to make any comments, you're welcome to come up and identify yourself and speak for three minutes.
I wasn't sure if I'd be here in time for this or not, but maybe this time might have passed. And I wasn't sure that I wanted to make any comments, but I believe you may have a handout that represented a supplement to the Health Services Impact Committee report.
Yes, please receive it.
And are you going to comment on the report, or the acceptance of the report?
Let's say the -- let me speak to the acceptance of the report.
Just because I'm thinking we're going to take that item up after the budget hearing, and you could comment then.
Okay. It's kind of interrelated a bit, but I think the focus of what I would like to say has to do with the acceptance of the report. So if you feel be more appropriate, we'd be happy to wait. When will that be?
Oh, very -- in just a couple minutes.
Okay. Yeah, let me just wait until that time.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks. Anybody who would like to speak at public comment?
Mr. Wiley was planning to be here, but it looks like he's been delayed. Maybe we can extend him a courtesy when he does arrive.
Then we'll move to the city manager's comments. She has none, so we will move to the public hearing. This is our second public hearing on the fiscal year 2010 budget. Is there a sign-up sheet?
Does it look like anyone signs up?
Okay. Would anybody like to make any comments at the public hearing on the FY 2010 budget? If you can identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Okay, I'm Catherine Gibney, 315 Lincoln Avenue. This is my third visit here. As some of you know, I would like to propose in the budget regarding the constant yield tax rate, if I got that right, that that be rolled back enough that there be no property tax increase this year. You know, I guess I could go on and on, but I just want to say I am a senior citizen. You know, this is really a killer for someone like myself. And I know there -- I'm also representing a friend who came with me last year, last week, Maria Aguado Horgan, who lives on Carroll. She is recovering, as you may have noticed that night, from breast cancer, and they just couldn't make it tonight, but she would like to throw her hat in the ring regarding that too. I would like to ask something that I'm sorry I did not know about. I think you're right this minute. Is this a proposal to increase the rental fee license by $86 each, or am I reading that wrong? Is there a proposal to increase that?
There was a proposal, but that's not included in the budget.
That's not included in the budget?
Correct.
Okay, so that's not my comment now, now. Okay, I, you know, I'm trying to remain positive and not get into this and that, and, you know, how should -- but I feel just deeply and very strongly about this. And I really feel like people, because that notice in the newsletter was so hard to decipher what it meant, that, you know, I don't think people really understand that there could be a 9.8% increase in property taxes. You know, I know next year, when the assessments go down, I mean, that's probably going to be a very big problem for the city, but, I mean, I just don't think at this point, you know, I mean, I guess I'm worried that there's an attempt to, like, push up the property taxes in lieu of that for next year, and, you know, it needs to come from someplace else. It needs to come from someplace else. So that is all I have to say, and that's all I wanted to say too.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
I greatly appreciate you coming and expressing your opinion, and I think it is a very hard thing we're dealing with in terms of increasing the taxes. And I'm just curious, I do like to hear from citizens. If you're proposing that we have no tax increase, what do you think in our budget we should cut?
Okay, I really haven't studied enough. You know, I would have liked to have done it, but I haven't. But I also feel like, you know, primarily, you're all the ones who've been through all these work sessions and everything, and it is something that you all know how to cut. I mean, I personally feel like it's time to start looking at personnel, but I don't like that either. I don't like the fact that people are losing their jobs, et cetera. So, you know, that's where I think it needs to be looked at. Who wants to do that? But, you know, I'd say it's time to -- since we have the highest taxes, as we all know, in the county, it's time to stop burning the property taxes. And, you know, I heard through the grapevine that there was a proposal to maybe drop it from 9.8 to, like, 2.5. I mean, I'm for it being enough below the rate that it can be totally wiped out this year.
Kind of just two comments. The proposed budget that we started with was leaving the rate at 60.5 cents, and the constant yield rate was 55.1. And the proposal where we are now, after the various work sessions, is to drop it to 58.5. So that's -- it's getting toward, but not reaching half of the increase in, well, the difference between the constant yield rate and the proposed rate.
Okay. So what you're saying is perhaps it's getting close to 5% increase for property taxes, if you're right, rather than 9.8%? Is that what you're saying?
I -- that --
Roughly speaking.
Yeah, roughly.
Okay. With this rumor, I heard a drop by 2%. Well, quite frankly, I think it was on Brinola Park. And I don't know that personally, as you all probably do, but I believe 2.5 was mentioned there, that there was perhaps some thought to drop it that low.
We're -- we have to finish that after the public hearing. We have one item to discuss, and then we'll know exactly where it's going to be.
Okay. And there's one more public hearing on the budget, and this?
There are -- this is the last public hearing, but then we have next Monday and the following Monday, we have first reading and second reading of the ordinances with another chance to comment.
With another chance.
So there are -- you -- anybody can comment on any of the budget items the next two Monday nights.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I also wanted to make sure that you're aware of the state program, and has the -- which has the county piggyback on it, and the city program, which can be for possible reductions in homeowner's property taxes for...
Homeowner's tax credit?
Yes.
Yes, I am. And I mean, quite frankly, I'm also in a prevention foreclosure program through the county. And, you know, I just wonder how many people in here in this -- how many foreclosures have there been to come apart? Does anybody know?
I think it's about 30.
30?
35.
I wonder about how many other people are, like, in a prevention program, but if they face another hike. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at the budget public hearing? Not you, Ron.
Thanks a lot. I'm going to pass the Constitution.
We'll give you a chance in a second. Anybody else for the budget public hearing? Okay, then I will close the budget public hearing, and we have one item to discuss with that, but Mr. Wiley is here to make a public comment, I believe, and I wanted to give you the chance to do that, and then we'll go on with the item we have to discuss on the budget.
Thank you very much. I wanted to thank each of you for the commitment to the pool that you made, $10,000. The second thing is that I wanted to let you know that we've got some good news as of today. Yesterday, as I thought about the situation, I considered the admonishment of the 1960s. Ask not what the Montgomery County Council can do for you, ask what you can do for the Montgomery County Council. They said that was a line they hadn't heard previously. With the help of the good chairman of our Public Advisory Committee, Terry Siemens, we put together what I referred to today as the Midnight Memo. We had, with your $10,000, we had the situation down to $83,000. We also had calculated that we would have $27,000 from revenues generated this year. Probably about 17, who's 15 at the end of April, 15,000 and a half, based on that projected for the last two months. We got to 27,000. That dropped it to 56. We then made 250% cuts in two items in the budget, which got it down to under $38,000, which meant that, and this was the big point that we made, that we are giving back $40,000 that's unused from the appropriation for the four and a half months. And so this amount then would be less than 40. In fact, when this went to the Treasury, they would have 2,000 left over. They saw that, and they voted the final decision. Today, they didn't recommend it for reconciliation. That would have been a good step, because the committee had not recommended it for reconciliation. But today, using the $40,000 that was unused, they were able to give us a final, and I wanted to share that with you. I feel very confident, given our experience thus far in some other revenue generating kinds of things. I feel very confident that that assures the pool for yet another year. And we did indicate, and I don't think this is brash, we did indicate that the goal, which I think is fully achievable, and which all of us that are working together as a team are committed to, is that we can make it self-sustaining for fiscal year 11. And I want to thank both of the Siemens, Susan, Kat Miller was there today, Kay, Daniels Cohn deserves credit, Deborah from our recreation department, and Robin Riley from the recreation department of the county. All of those people are part of the team, and they also deserve the credit for this achievement. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you for bringing in good news. And I hope that the pool operations over the coming period of time meet and exceed your expectations of revenue generation so that everything can continue.
It is like a genuine pronoun, power and anticipation.
So now we'll go back to the, kind of, the one item that was left hanging from our reconciliation discussion on Thursday night, just to make sure. I believe we had some information from the city manager about the possible paving of Palmer Lane, and I think that was the estimate from the city engineer was 20,000 or 25,000. And if you could just, if the city manager could just kind of share with us where the -- whether that was included in all of the figures that you gave us behind the cover sheet, or how that would change, whether or how that would change any of the figures there.
Pending direction from the council, that additional expenditure has not been incorporated into the figures that are before you. So my hope was that if the council wants to move forward with paving Palmer Lane in FY 2010, that that direction could be given tonight, so we can incorporate those figures into the budget ordinances that will be presented next Monday.
Okay. And the, I guess, maybe first I'll ask for any comments from any of the council about whether to include that, or whether we need any discussion, or whether we just want to indicate where we want to go on that. Councilmember Wright?
I'm okay including it, with the understanding that it wasn't -- the reason is because it wasn't originally in the street assessment. So I view this as a special case, because I think we've been stuck very strongly to that original assessment, and done it in priority order. But my understanding from the public works director was that it wasn't in that original assessment, so for that reason, I'm willing to put it in. And I would suggest that it would come out, that we wouldn't raise taxes any more than we already are, but it would just come out from reserve funds.
Yeah, I wanted to get a clarification on that, once I had an indication of where the council wanted to go. My sense is that people wanted to include that. Is there anybody who would not like to include that?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm unclear why this was a street that was overlooked when we did the assessment, why we wouldn't just insert it in the list at the place where it would have fallen had we done the assessment at the same time as all the other streets.
I believe that point would have passed about two years ago.
Councilmember Siemens, I think it was overlooked, because I think it was believed to be a private alley, and when the issue was raised, I believe by Councilmember Clay, as I recall. The public works department went back and reviewed the inventory that was done back in, I guess, 2004, just prior to my starting with the city. So that's why it was not included. I think Daryl and Ali had planned to do it in 2012 originally, essentially to kind of stick it at the end of the list, if you will. I did ask the public works director to drive the street on Friday, just to try to get a sense of, you know, her assessment of the condition. Obviously, it was not rated in the same manner that other streets in the city were back in 2004. She did indicate that it was in poor shape. Obviously, there are some private areas of the street that would not be paved as part of this project, as noted on the cover sheet. But I don't know that she had an opinion as to whether or not it should be in 2011 or 2012, but she was comfortable saying that it was not in great shape and should be done sometime either next year or the year after that.
I guess my question more succinctly is, rather than put it at the end of the list, why not, if it is of a higher priority, put it at the beginning of the list and shift everything else down a little?
That would be a great question for the public works director, who unfortunately is not here. I think part of this is that there have obviously been residents living on the streets that were scheduled to go forward in 2011, who have been essentially promised that or told that. So I think her thought was that she did not want to disappoint those residents who live on the streets that were scheduled to come forward in 2011.
Thank you.
And if I could just reiterate my point of a minute ago, that I believe that if the street had been in the list and rated as all of the other ones were, it would have been done already, probably a couple of years ago, because it was in a lot worse shape than the ones that we're getting to now.
I wasn't suggesting we could go back in time.
I was just trying to answer the, "Well, why don't we put it where it belongs in the list?", and it's, we already went past it.
Thank you.
And so then if I can get some clarification from the city manager, when I was doing my calculations last week about where we ended up with the reconciliation, and we had -- we didn't, we weren't sure of a dollar figure for Palmer Lane, and I think at that point we were talking 40,000 as a, just as a figure to put on it. And I'm not sure, but what I thought was that we were kind of somewhere between 2 cents and 2 and 1/4 cents on the tax rate, and I thought that we were there, including a placeholder for 40,000 for Palmer Lane. So I didn't know if putting it, and we said, "Okay, we'll advertise 2 cents for this public hearing," whether Palmer Lane at 20 or 25 into the figures affects where we are on that. Do you have any figures on that?
If you look at, I guess, one comment is also noted under the special consideration section of your cover sheet, as I did want to flag for the council, is that I adjusted the projection for the non-departmental budgetary unit, decreasing that by $40,000 for the current fiscal year, which essentially bumps up the year-end fund balance by that amount. So between what you did last week and that change, if you go back to my original proposed budget and you look at the unrestricted fund balance, it is actually higher in the materials that are before the council this evening than what I originally proposed. If that helps. So in other words, you could add Palmer Lane, and you're still at an unrestricted fund balance that is higher than what I originally proposed.
And if we take that into consideration with the, with where everything else ended up, and the fact that we were between 2 and 2 cents and 2 and 1/4 cents, if we were to go to 2 and 1/4 cents, would that work with the numbers that we've got?
Yes, it would. I want to, if I may, ask a question of the finance director. I believe the county, when we submit the tax rate, only allows three digits. Is that correct? Or they, do they round? Yeah, we have typically tried to keep the tax rate to three digits, basically. So I guess what I'm suggesting is, if the council wants to adjust the tax rate from tax rate decrease from 2 cents, you may want to consider doing something other than 2 and 1/4, perhaps going to 2 and 1/2, because I'm not sure that the county doesn't limit the number of digits you can have. If that makes sense.
Or we could go to 2.3, and that would...
Whatever you would like to do.
Good. I guess I'll propose that we go forward with our items for next week, reflecting a 2.3% -- 2.3 cent reduction from 60.5. So it would be, what is that, 58.2?
Why not do 2.5?
I was just trying to, I was trying to get it lower, but not go way beyond kind of the parameters of where we were.
I don't know that it would be... I don't know that it would be entirely that problematic to do what councilmember Robinson is suggesting. As I mentioned, I don't have the exact figure. I did look at them before the meeting, but reflected in your materials is essentially an unrestricted fund balance that is about roughly a hundred thousand dollars, ninety thousand dollars, more than what my original budget assumed.
Okay.
So basically, you seem that every half cent on the tax rate is roughly ninety-five thousand, even if you add in Palmer Lane, it's basically going to be a decrease of about twenty-five thousand, from what I originally proposed.
That was the most encouraging budget news I've heard recently, that it wasn't a problem to drop it more than originally suggested. Could we do three point five?
Three?
A good joke, and we say, don't push your luck, but that's all your decision, not mine.
I guess, I guess I'll propose two and a half. I see a couple of nods, yes? Okay, let's, let's do one more straw vote in honor of last Thursday night, two and a half cents. I see four. So, councilmember Sniffer?
Danman for two and a half.
All right.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, I will add Palmer Lane, and I would suggest, if you're going to add Palmer Lane, that you include twenty-five thousand in the budget, given some of the uncertainty.
Right.
And then I will reflect a tax rate of fifty-eight cents.
Yes. Okay. Any other comments from the council before we move on? All right, we'll move to our regular meeting, and the first item is a resolution acknowledging receipt of the final report of the Health Services Impact Committee. Would somebody like to move that resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Sigmund, do you have anything that you want to convey to us on this?
I mean, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We recommend that the council accept the resolution of, not necessarily accept every suggestion in the resolution. I think it's going to serve as a valuable starting point for us, as we negotiate with the hospital. And we're going to turn the, the report over to the expert consultants that we're working with, to help them in coming up with some goals to negotiate for with the hospital.
Any council questions or comments? Is there any public comment on this resolution acknowledging receipt of the final report of the Health Services Impact Committee?
I'll speak primarily to the resolution, because anything else that I have to say kind of falls under that, away from it, or whatever. I don't really have any problem with the resolution. I was able to look through it last day or so, received a copy of it, and, and I don't have a real problem with the, with the resolution. I, I don't have anything against the city addressing the question of health financing, and the resolution kind of rules that out. I'm neutral on that. I'm a member of the committee, and, and am very much aware of the discussion about the financial aspects of the health crisis, and, and much of our health crisis has, has to do with, with finance. So I'm kind of neutral on, on that. The, the other major, that was one of the several, there weren't a lot of recommendations that the committee made. There were maybe four or five. That was one, that the city looked at possibility of providing municipal funding for citizen healthcare needs, as particularly the underserved, and so on. Other recommendation, and I really don't have, I'm kind of neutral on that, even though the, the committee did recommend that the city consider establishing, as a city effort, an integrative clinic, as, as the committee chose to, to speak of it. And I'm kind of neutral on that as well. But, and so, the, essentially, the, the resolution suggests that the city not get involved with financing, but that the, the rest of the report be made available to the appropriate entities, and I'm, I'm very comfortable with that. That brings me to the supplement to the report that I submitted, and which you should have in your, in your packet. And I'd like to say just a word or two about that, because if I had had my brothers, the report would have been a little different than, although much of it I'm in agreement with. But much of what you have in the form of a supplement is material, not all of it, but much of it is material that, that I had submitted to the, to the committee, hoping that it could get into the committee report. They saw fit to go with their recommendations. The part, what I have tried to do is something that, at one point, we had talked about doing as a committee, but ended up going with our own recommendations. What I have tried to do is something that the mayor, in a conversation that several, a couple of us had with, with you, asked that our committee do, which we really did not do in the report, and that is, he had asked that we look at the WAW proposal. Instead, we went with our own. And I felt that we, I would like to have seen us look at the WAW proposal, and give you some benefit of, of the time that we had spent on this subject. And some of that, we spent time on, but it did not make its way into our report. So the supplement, I've tried to do some of that. I've not taken a strong position one way or the other, as far as WAW versus the committee recommendations, but I've tried to give you something which gives pros and cons, both with regards to WAW, and some comparison with the, the city recommendations. I think my time is up, so I'll stop there. I would like to just say in closing, though, that the, the supplement represents a reworking of the committee report. And I was actually working with our document. In so doing, I tried to delete footnotes. I noticed when Jesse helped me put it out the other day, that it did, it disallowed that. So there, there's part of the footnoting from the original report, and it wasn't supposed to be there, and I think the appendix is repeated. I also wanted to talk to Sue Silver. Tried to see her today, but she was not in her office. Jesse and I talked about this a little bit, but I, I may ask her, if she'd be willing, after talking to Sue, to see if I can give you another version that's cleaned up a little bit. And I also had a little question about the wording, and Jesse helped me with that a bit, but we wanted to make clear that since the committee-like expectancy is, is ended, that this is not a product of the committee, even though it's a supplement. But by the same token, I want to make clear that there is a connection with the, the committee report, and so I'd like to talk to Sue and see if we can, can clarify that a little bit, as far as the title and, and so on.
Okay.
And clean up some of the problems that I referred to.
Thanks, thanks very much for your work on the committee, and your continued work on the supplement.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. It was fun. And I want to thank the council, and you, Mayor Williams, for helping fund what I feel was a very substantial survey of city preferences and interests, as far as not only the site, but also healthcare needs. And you're to be commended for putting out that, making that expenditure. Thank you.
And, and I believe that, at the beginning, you didn't identify yourself, so just for the record, if you can identify yourself.
Yes, Trevor Delafield, and I'm one of the five final standing members of the Health Services Impact Committee.
Thanks very much. Is there any other public comment on the resolution acknowledging receipt of the final report of the Health Services Impact Committee? Okay, any final council comment? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Ruben?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a single reading ordinance authorizing a contract award for development of specifications and construction drawings for the Linden Avenue Water Quality retrofit and retaining wall replacement.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions on the ordinance? Any public comment? This is a ordinance to design a project for which we received stimulus funding over on the other side of New Hampshire Avenue, and there were pictures on the, of the particular need that are part of the packet, for anybody who's wondering what it is. I guess we are ready for a roll call vote, since this is a single reading ordinance. Will the court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next item on our agenda is a first reading ordinance amending the Comer Park Code Title Five, Elections.
Move the ordinance.
Pardon?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
And I see that the chair of the, I'm not going to get this name right, the Elections...
Board of Elections.
Board of Elections is here, and if you'd like to make any comments on the...
Oh, yeah. Just a hard if I do it from here?
Sure.
Good evening. I just wanted to run through really quickly, and I'm Anne Sargent, Chair of the Tacoma Park Board of Elections. I just wanted to run through quickly, in case people had not had a chance to review. And we've made a number of changes to the city code Title Five. One part is we clarify in definitions what the ballot is, and we also add the term provisional ballot. We haven't had provisional balloting before in Tacoma Park. The next part is we simplified voting systems, just to make it simpler, and also so we're not nailed down to using one system or another. It gives us flexibility in the future. Instruction and assistance in voting is something we also covered. We updated it and clarified it. Closing of polls and tabulation of votes are also clarified, and we've simplified them, and we, so it matches better with using paper ballots. And also that we have instant runoff voting in Tacoma Park. Now, see, we're so far ahead of Minnesota. The next part is election contests and appeals. It transfers authority to the Board of Elections to decide on those contests and appeals. And the right to appeal is, is updated also. Next part is inspection of ballots in the event of an election contest, contest or appeal. And we remove specific reference to voting machines, because we may or may not be using voting machines. We might have scanners, we might have other systems. And absentee voting is revised to be consistent with a charter amendment, to allow anybody to vote by absentee ballot. It's more or less the same as no-fault absentee voting. Emergency absentee balloting is changed to late absentee, just kind of a clarification. And it allows people to stop in and pick up an absentee ballot from Jesse or whoever else is the city clerk at the time. Determination of absentee voters, eligibility and delivery of ballots, we clarified. Absentee ballots is simplified, to give us more authority regarding the form and just what the ballot looks like. Tabulation of absentee ballots also clarified. Contest appeals clarified. We're, I'm okay. Penalties is a municipal infraction instead of a civil offense, and provisional voting is a new section added. We haven't had that before. It has sometimes been possible to make arrangements for somebody to vote provisionally, if there's an error someplace in the rolls, but now we have a specific provision for it. And in case anybody's wondering, provisional voting means vote now, when in doubt, vote now and sort it out later. So that doesn't, the attempt is to enfranchise as many people as possible. Any questions about that? For those?
Councilwoman Robinson?
Hi, Anne. I'll just say that I'm looking at the number of words that are, have lines through them, and the number of words that are in, that are included, or added. And I commend you for taking out many more words than you've added.
I'll report that back to the group.
Okay. And just in some simple, in a couple of instances, it's much clearer what you've done with fewer words, so I'm all, all for clearer language.
Actually, I should give full credit. Jesse had a lot to do with that.
Thank you, Jesse.
And if I can add, that it's been very helpful to have an Elections Board, Board of Elections, because up until about, what, a year or two ago, we never had one. And it kind of, by default, fell to the council to have to do something if something needed to be changed, and yet that was kind of uncomfortable, because it was affecting our elections. And so it was very helpful to, to have the board, and then to have the excellent volunteers that came forward to comprise the board. And we really appreciate, appreciate your efforts to chair the board, and to move these changes forward, and investigate better ways to do elections, and come forward with proposals, and really appreciate all your work.
Thanks, and I'll convey that to the Board of Elections, too.
Good. Any other questions on the council? Is there anybody who would like to provide any public comments on this first reading ordinance amending our Elections Code? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item is a first reading ordinance adapting or revised FY oh nine, that's the current year pay scale for staff who are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. The city manager like to make any... Oh, Karen Hampton's here, and I heard a...
I'm just moving.
Second.
You can, you can move them.
Move the ordinance.
Moved by councilmember Clay, seconded by councilmember Siemens. Yes, it's, it's handy to do it first, then we don't forget.
Just move.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Basically, I'll do, again, the item five and six together. You have before you a proposed ordinance amending the fiscal year oh nine general pay scale for staff not covered by the collective bargaining agreement, as well as the proposed ordinance amending the fiscal year oh nine police pay scale. As you know, some time ago, we retained Slade Management to do a comprehensive classification and compensation study for us. Jill Pollard, project manager, was here in March and presented you with her findings and recommendations. And basically, she said that, in general, the lower level jobs were above market, and the higher level jobs were below market. And so to correct those inequities, she revised the pay scales on our classification. And the pay scale is what I'm presenting to you today. We don't have a pay scale for ASME at this time. We're still in discussions with them, and we hope to come back to you, perhaps by the end of May, with their pay scale.
Okay, thank you. And I would point out to everybody that these changes don't take effect until they are enacted. So there's no retroactive provision on any of this. It's just, whenever we do it, then it has an effective date. And so if the ASME one comes back, it'll have an effective date, but it won't, you know, the longer it delays, the longer the change is delayed. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Wright?
For agenda item number five, how many employees are we talking about, just that this covers?
I don't have it broken out between the...
Actually, I do.
You do? Okay. I have a thirty-five total. Okay, I've just had it.
Can I have my second question?
There it is. For those that are not represented by ASME, that are not in the police pay plan, that are not in the police union, it's thirty-seven employees. And then there's thirty-one in the, covered by the police pay plan.
And what's the annualized effect of this? Dollar amount?
Well, it's about sixty thousand, sixty thousand for the two, for the police, and for the staff not covered by the collective bargaining agreement.
And did we get the old scales, the new scales in here, but did we get the old scales in the packet? I just missed it, or no?
No, I didn't, I didn't put the old scales in there.
Just, I know I'm going to do this again for a long time, but I think in situations like this, it is helpful to have the old scale.
Sure, to look at it, yeah. Hopefully, we'll be coming back in July with the market adjustments, so we'll have both scales in there for you.
Councilmember Clay?
You made a comment that the pay scale for the lower-level positions were above market, and the higher-level ones were below market?
The wage studies showed that the lower-level positions were above market, so that... That the pay brackets for those positions?
So I'm looking at this, and for the people who are watching along at home, there's twenty-two grades with three steps to each grade, and I only see two grades, which those could be twenty... Where there was, where there was, with the twenty-eight, only twenty-eight, actually. You're not even that one. I don't see anywhere the, where the market rate is, is less than what our step three is, so where our pay grade would be above the market rate at any point. So my question is then...
This is in comparison to the previous pay grade?
So does that mean that we've reduced, for the, for some of the lower levels, we've actually reduced the pay at those levels? Since we're, it's not reflected in this?
The pay brackets, the pay brackets change. No, no employee has reduced, you know, ends up being reduced.
Reduced, okay, thanks.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I continue to feel that market rate adjustments are not a good idea during this difficult economic time, and it, I guess it reinforces my feeling to think that it is the people at the higher grades that are the ones that are actually going to have the pay grade increases more than the people at the lower grades. So I do not support this.
Any other comments? I'll just say that this is to, this is a process that's built into our pay system, and how long has it been since this was done?
About ten years. It was ninety-nine.
So that if there were potential problems that needed to be fixed as part of a market-based system, that this is the chance to fix those. And then going forward, we have the, hopefully, the proper pay for the job being done, so that we don't have problems with trying to fill a job, and what's put out there, we're not paying enough, and we can't attract the right people.
Attract and retain. Right.
And it's also retention.
Yeah, and I'd also like to comment that even though it's in general, there was some inequities based on kind of where they were on the scale, it varies tremendously by title. And so that's what's very helpful about having a market study, is that for the individual titles, they can see what's the correct market bracket.
Councilmember Wright?
I just have one follow-up comment to Bruce's, to sort of support Bruce's point in that, if you think about it from an economic perspective, if we, if you don't do this, we don't remain competitive, what happens is, people will eventually leave, and the best people will likely leave because they're able to get other jobs in other governments. And the way that we have generally dealt with reducing budgets in any way is not to refill positions. We don't cut positions. So what's going to happen is you're going to lose your best people, and then not fill those positions, and have the people who are not as good, I don't want to call them "not good," but not as good as the best people. So I would, I'm in favor of passing this, and if we need to deal with the budget side of things, we should cut positions partially based on performance.
And I would add that attracting and retaining, hopefully, the best and the brightest, will pay us much better dividends in the long run. Does any public comment on this first reading of the ordinance revising pay scale? Okay, since it's a first reading, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed?
No.
So we will have that come back at second reading. I'm assuming Councilmember Sniffer was an aye?
I'm an aye, yes.
Okay, so that was six to one. And the next item, my pen has stopped working.
Did you do five and six together?
No, we did not. We only did five.
Okay.
Move six.
Moved by Councilmember, seconded by Councilmember Clay. This is the first reading ordinance adopting a revised FY-09 pay scale for police officers. We've heard the same discussions. Does anybody else have any comments on these? Does anybody in the public have any comment on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Same result as the previous one. Next item on our agenda is the, is the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. That's a resolution recognizing National Public Works Week, May seventeenth to twenty-third, and a single reading ordinance authorizing an extension of contract for services for grant standards. Does anybody like to move the consent agenda?
Move.
Second.
Councilmember Clay moved it, Councilmember Barry seconded it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Wait a minute. Can I call the roll for this one?
Oh, I guess we'll let you.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
See, it's hard to do a roll call when you're on a roll. And we're a little ahead of schedule, but I think we will take our break, and we'll come back for our last two items, which are work session items. To address dumpsters and storage units in the right-of-way, and Councilmember Clay wanted to bring this up and discuss it, and the Public Works Director is here. And if you want to tell us the, all the important things we need to know, and then we'll pepper you with questions, and we'll make you change everything, and we'll go from there.
Well, we thought as a, as a novel exercise, or at least I thought as a novel exercise this time around, is we'd really have a discussion, so I could get a better sense of what you'd like to see in the ordinance, if anything, rather than, though sometimes it's easier to comment on an existing document. So we're taking this new approach on this particular issue. The city does permit the use of the right-of-way for storage dumpsters, or what we call storage pods, or construction dumpsters. The current process is that someone applies for a permit, we go out, take a look at the site, if it meets our requirements, which means if it's not too close to an intersection, if it's not on a no-parking side of the street, we allow the resident to get a permit to store the dumpster for a period of up to six months. There's been a number of issues that have occurred over the past year or so. One of the things is that we're getting more and more requests for storage dumpsters, and we're also getting more and more complaints from residents driving by or seeing a dumpster and getting irritated that it's been there for a long time. Internally, we've also been quite concerned with some of the damage that's been done to the city right-of-way as a result of construction dumpsters, either chips or gouges in the curb, gouges in the road surface. And once the dumpster company leaves, they leave behind, the damage, and the city is then left with doing that repair when it does its street or curb or gutter work in the future. So I know that Councilmen Clay has have an interest in this issue, and so we've just sort of put before you a list of potential changes that we could make to the ordinance. Most of these things have a, have, we have some experience with in other ordinances, so you see some of the suggestions, like for instance, a public comment period. We have that currently now as a process in the tree permit process. Providing a bond or a security, we have that in a number of permit process, primarily related to stormwater or construction, when a construction company is doing something in the right-of-way, we have the ability to ask them for a bond or a security to cover the cost. In the event it's not done correctly, then the city would have the funds to do that. There's also been the interest of limiting the time that a construction dumpster could get, could get set. Three months is an idea that's been tossed around. I was also looking at some other jurisdictions laws, and some have an absolute limit on, you cannot go beyond X number of months, and if you, if you need to, then you've got to come up with a different solution. And there are different solutions that exist, though they potentially could be more expensive. One is off-site storage at any location. The other is some of the pod companies will actually take the pod away and store it. So there's the storage garage approach, there's also the pod delivery. So there's some options for people off-site. So those are the suggestions that we have in front of you. Any change to the code requires a two-reading, a decision of the council, so whenever we get a draft of a first reading based on the comments tonight, then we can bring that back and tweak it as you need.
Councilmember Clay, do you have questions or comments?
I do, actually. I'm just chewing my M&amp;M's. First of all, thank you for taking this on and getting it rolling. I appreciate you pulling out the different ways that we could change the process. In the last couple of years, I've received a lot of complaints from residents who live around areas where someone has a dumpster or a pod, and other folks who, who don't live like right around it, but have to drive past it and find it to be a significant safety hazard. They're wider than your average car is, and I would say that the majority of complaints that I've gotten have actually been about the pods, and not so much about the dumpsters. So thank you for this. Some suggestions that I would have is that being able to put something in the roadway, be conditional on someone, show, demonstrating that they actually cannot put it on their property. I've had two dumpsters at my house. I had one in the street when I, when I first moved in, primarily because I was, I had to disassemble my basement, and so I needed actually to have the garage clear so that I could haul the stuff out. The second one I put in my driveway, because I have a driveway and I don't need to be putting a dumpster on the street. And I think if somebody has a place to put a dumpster or a pod on their property, that that's where it should have to be. The other thing is that I don't think that we should allow people to put storage pods in the public right-of-way for any longer than it takes to load them, because the fact is that all of those places do take the fully-loaded pods away, and they, and they store them. That's a service that they provide, and the idea that we're going to provide storage for people's belongings on the, on the street, that's just not a necessity. There's an alternative for that, and, and it is, you know, onsite storage. There isn't an alternative necessarily for the, for the dumpsters as you're, as you're doing a construction project. And I think, as you pointed out last time you were here, the most egregious case was somebody who actually was using a pod as their construction box that was storing stuff for another, another entity, not even for the homeowners, but he was essentially just, I mean, I suppose you could make money off of that, you could get a city permit, and then you could offer, you know, local storage to people. I just don't think that's appropriate. So I would recommend that we come up with a timeframe that just allows people to load and unload the storage pods, and then they would have to haul them away. The last point I would like to make is, you know, a lot of this is about visibility, as well as just what it looks like. You know, we don't let people in a corner have their bushes, I think, over, over three feet tall, so you can't see around them. And I think the reason why I get more complaints about the pods than the bins, a lot of the bins are, you know, four feet high, maybe five feet, but the storage pods are eight to ten feet high, they're really high, you can't see, you can't see around them at all. And I think that's part of the complaint process that people have. So I feel more flexible about the dumpsters, and I think if we're going to do something about the dumpsters, maybe asking people who store them on the street to use the lowest version of them, so that there's a little bit more visibility around them. And that's what I was suggesting. Again, thanks for pulling it together.
Councilmember Barry?
I would agree with Councilmember Clay, for slightly different reasons. I think these pods are horrible eyesores, they're ugly. They sit there for weeks at a time, and they may be traffic hazards, but they also, they're just, they're just hideous. And they also advertise the services of the pod company that is etched all over the front of it. So it's an ongoing advertisement, sitting right in the middle of some of our vizier thoroughfares. So I think it's the time, as Councilmember Clay alluded to, these should be for a very short-term fixed period. They are a convenience to the person who is moving, and therefore, they should be there only for the time that it takes to move stuff into them, which is not weeks, it's hours, and to arrange for the pod company to come and take it to the next location. It was never intended to be a long-term solution for the, for the benefit of the property owner or the renter, it's really for a very short-term purpose. And I would like to see the ordinance modified, so it makes that very clear, so everyone knows that it is not a substitute for taking your belongings to one of the many storage facilities in the area. Regarding the dumpsters, it may be, especially in the case where it's on the street and causing damage, or could cause damage, that there ought to be some reasonable bond posted, so that if there is damage to the street afterwards, there is monies that have been deposited with the city that can then be used to fix whatever damage the dumpster causes. Hopefully, that won't be an accounting nightmare. I don't know that there are that many of them around, to tell you the truth. I see them in my ward from time to time, but I think it would be completely manageable. And it, and it might go a long way towards solving the problem of uncompensated damage the city then is responsible for fixing.
Councilmember Robinson?
Hi. I agree that this is a good thing to, to work on, to control. I see a difference between pods and dumpsters. I think we ought, I'm concerned about enforcement, and I'm trying to think about how to do enforcement correctly. I think that we ought to leave, ought to allow two weeks for a pod, and put a big orange sign on the pod, sticky sign, which has the end date, and when that end date is passed, allow our officers to give them a fifty-dollar ticket, but have no charge for it during that two-week period. And on the dumpster, I think that there ought to be a fifty-dollar per-month charge with a two-month limit, and again, a fifty-dollar ticket after two months, and again, a big old orange sign which has the end date.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I would fully double what Councilmember Clay has said. I agree wholeheartedly with her assessment of the situation. I, I can foresee that some residents may be using the pods to store construction materials during construction, so in addition to moving, they might use it for construction storage. Again, I would hope that they can demonstrate that they couldn't do that on their own property, though, rather than in the street. But that's just an extra consideration for how long it might be on the street, you might permit a little bit longer if it was for construction storage. But again, I think six months is way beyond reasonable.
Councilmember Wright?
Just had a few questions. One, we're not talking about supplying to a pod or dumpster that goes on someone's own property, right?
Right. Well, that is certainly up to the council. Currently, our code just deals with the right-of-way. There are some cities that regulate the... There are some cities that regulate the use of permits, permit pods or construction dumpsters on private property as well, but we don't currently have that in our code.
I might be interested in somehow trying to deal with pods in particular that are in place on people's properties for a long time. Not in my ward now, but when I lived in Councilmember Robinson's ward before, there was a pod that was in someone's front yard or on their driveway for nine months or a year. And, you know, to Councilmember Barry's point, I think it's just unsightly. And I can understand someone may need it for some period of time, but it seems like six months would be a reasonable period of time for something to be on someone's private property. Are there solutions if a dumpster, are there other solutions? You know, some construction projects are very large and can take a long time. And so we're saying after six months, you can't have a dumpster there.
Well, it potentially could be in the ordinance. It isn't currently in the code.
Right. But are there solutions, and Bruce may know the answer to this question, are there solutions that get around that if you go beyond the six-month timeframe for a dumpster?
Well, and Bruce may want to speak to it, but my own sense of the issue is that it really has to do with how well the contractor schedules and plans their work. And in fact, depending on the cost of the dumpster and what's the benefit, cost benefit to the contractor, just using a truck to haul debris away daily is sometimes more cost-efficient than a dumpster. It just sort of depends on if they have it in their repertoire or not. If you're bringing in a dumpster from an outside source, it's a guaranteed 500 bucks, you know, for each siding and pull. And then if you go overweight, you have to pay for the additional money for that. So a lot of it depends on the contractor themselves and the work they're doing, the level of debris. We have worked with some contractors to try to encourage them to use trucks instead of dumpsters, and you get mixed response. It just depends on the convenience issue for the contractor. But there's any number of ways. You could also store construction debris on the lawn of a property and then, you know, arrange for a large truck to come and load it in and haul it away. So there's alternatives. It just happens to deal with the efficiency and the equipment level of the contractor.
And do other places require a bond? I'm just wondering about this practice.
I haven't, I didn't stumble across any in the quick looks I did through some of the other jurisdictions. Because we have bond requirements for some other things, it just came to mind to us as a way to deal with the damage.
I'm supportive of all of Councilmember Clay's ideas also.
Councilmember Snipper, do you have any comments?
Yes, I am generally supportive of Councilmember Clay's proposal. I do think that the time limit should be longer, though, because I can easily imagine somebody painting their house and having it take three or four weeks for that to happen. So I can imagine using those storage things for, you know, somewhat longer periods than just loading it up. And I don't want to have people try to schedule the guy to come and take the pod away or some similar thing. So I can easily imagine a somewhat longer timeframe for that. I do like the idea of having a bond, something, security deposit kind of idea for the damage. And I do wonder if there is a way to encourage people to use it, to place it on their property instead of in the roadway. But it does create the similar problem of an unsightly dumpster regardless of whether it's located in the driveway or on the street. A number of years ago, when we did our renovation, it took an enormous amount of time. As you all know, these renovations take longer than they, you think they're going to. And we had a dumpster in a driveway for, it must have been, six or eight months. And the thing was incredibly unsightly. So I do wonder if a little effort of thinking about the storage of these things, the placement of these things on the property itself might be an issue we want to think about, too. That's it.
Okay. I had a couple thoughts. Generally going in the direction that my colleagues are going, I think we definitely need a bond for anything that's placed in the street, whether it's the construction debris or a pod. I wasn't sure, as I looked at what you gave us, that what we have currently really addresses pods. I can see that it definitely addresses dumpsters. Maybe there were sections that you didn't give us, but it didn't look like the language addressed pods.
Yeah, the current code just really was geared for construction dumpsters. Pods didn't exist when, you know, they're fairly recent incarnations.
I think as far as the construction dumpsters go, I think, yes, we should have language that makes it clear that if they can go, if there's any way that they can go on the property, they need to be on the property, that there needs to be a demonstration of need, that it has to be in the street, because the street is for the use of the public. And this is essentially taking it up for private use. So I think that if it's on the street, it not only needs a bond, they need to be charged for the time that they're monopolizing that spot on the street. And I thought about it in terms of not necessarily trying to pick a timeframe, saying, you know, a month or three months or six months or whatever it might be, but to say, okay, for whatever, like, say, a 30-day period, an ability to put one in that spot for that 30-day period or any part of that 30-day period is X amount of money. If you want to go a second month, you've got to pay again. Third month, pay again. And I think that would take care of the construction dumpster question fairly quickly, because then you've got an economic incentive to minimize the time. But you've got the ability to extend if the project is larger. I think for the pods, I see them as different in many ways. I see them as if they're on the street and occupying the space, it's essentially in lieu of paying the company or the storage facility or the storage locker or whoever it might be for that space. And the kind of spaces that get charged for the space that those pods take up runs into the hundreds of dollars per month. And so I think if there are pods, we ought to say, okay, if it's on the street, provide a bond as well and make it for a shorter period of time, like, I don't know, two weeks to load it up. If you can't get yourself organized to fill one of those things in two weeks, you're not very organized and there ought to be a, you know, you shouldn't be able to do it. And that there should be a charge for that time as well. And I'm not sure what those charges should be. I don't know whether they should be tied to a municipal infraction or whether it should be essentially rent. And if it goes over, whether there is a municipal infraction in addition to the rent. And I think that in, certainly in the case of a construction dumpster, a sticker on it wouldn't work because you can have the case where the dumpster gets filled and they bring an empty on the truck and they take away the full one and leave the empty one and your sticker is gone. So I think in the case of a dumpster, it might be that it would need to be either, you know, a stake in the yard or applied somewhere on a building, something that stays there and says, there is this permit to do this for this period of time. And of course, the more prominent and bigger those are, they can get ugly, too. But I think there are ways to address this and incentivize good behavior. And I hadn't given much thought to what we might do to control it on private property. I know in my own case, I have a dump truck and that's what I use, and it gets parked on the property. It never gets parked on the street, because if I did, I would get the neighbors upset and I would get the authorities upset and I'd get a ticket. Because you can't park commercial vehicles on the street. And I look on pods and construction dumpsters as commercial vehicles. You can't park them on the street.
And one thing I'll need to check with the city attorney's office, I mean, clearly we have the ability to charge a application fee, which is what's currently charged based on, you know, the, you know, rule of thumb there is amount of time it would take to administer the process. Right now, it's a $25 application fee. The bond, we can justify based on, you know, protection of city assets and potential damage to the right-of-way. I don't know about the rent concept. We'll have to get a read from them as to whether or not we could charge.
We charge for use of the public right-of-way for telecom stuff, and it's partly on what can do potential damage to the street or to city infrastructure, and we have that same issue here.
We have a work in the right-of-way for utility companies. It's based on the linear foot of the, you know, excavation that they're doing, generally the charge is related to that. I'll have to take a look at that to see if it's imperative.
So rent for linear foot for the length of the pod or the dumpster. And I was thinking in terms of like, for a construction dumpster, if they're paying $500 for a dumpster, it seems reasonable to say that if we could charge for a period of time for the use of the street for that, it should be like $100 or $200 a month, easily.
I'll explore that. The other thing that I had a thought, just knowing the way these things tend to work, is I would encourage the council to move to, rather than a citation, municipal infractions, then we've got to get somebody to write a ticket. If they don't pay the ticket, then we have to send it over to the city attorney's office. Somebody's got to go to court. It's just this long process. I mean, I found it far more effective.
Make it rent ahead of time.
Well, I found it far more effective just the threat of impound, that companies show up quite quick. And so, you know, we could just make that clear in the application process. If you've passed your date where the time is no longer applied, you know, the city has the authority since it's in the public right-of-way to tow and to impound it. And then that's a cost that the company then has to cover to release their, what's that?
Impounded dumpster.
You just haul it away.
Haul it away and park it, and they can't get to it, and they don't have their asset anymore, and therefore they can't make money on it.
Well, I mean, you would, I mean, there's issues there that you'd have to be prepared for. Certainly, the company that owns the dumpster will have lost the asset, the resident, for whatever's in there now. Of course, if it's construction debris, it's just trash.
They'll say, good riddance, I'm glad it's gone.
But if it's, you know, someone's household belongings that you've impounded in the dumpster, it could potentially create some hostility.
In a way, we're treating it like a vehicle without wheels. Therefore, it's subject to licenses, tags, and other kinds of fees that the local government should be able to collect.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
I have a concern about these storage pods, which is that I can easily imagine them being used for rotating storage if somebody is renovating a house or painting a house or something similar. They'd rotate a room into that, you know, storage space while it was being painted or being renovated. I can easily, so I can imagine that situation in which the pod would be temporary storage space, and you'd want it on the property because of the quick turnover. You wouldn't want to take the furniture away and two days later, three days later, bring it back. So I think we do need to think about those pods sitting around for some period of time also.
I know in New York City, when sometimes when people have a party, they load all of the extra stuff from their apartment into a van and drive it around the city while the party's happening and then bring it back in.
What parties do you do?
You go to some wild parties.
They need the space.
I haven't heard any comments on the public comment. No interest in pursuing that. Neighborhood comment.
Let's have a hearing. I think that that would be great, but I think people don't realize it until it shows up and, you know, know what it looks like until it's there. I think we're much better to come up with a set of functional rules than a public comment. And like, right now, you can't put something in if it obstructs the view at an intersection. I just, I think we have to think things out. Because the other side of it is, I don't necessarily think your neighbor should be able to stop you from having the use of a dumpster in your yard or a pod in your yard if that's what we're going to allow people to do. I suppose the public comment period, you could encourage their neighbor to make modifications to their plans that might make folks happy, but I don't think it's as important as kind of prethinking it and putting it into the regulation.
One of the things that we don't know, of course, when we go out to take a look, I mean, clearly, we're well aware of the sightline issues and we know to look for driveways across and make sure that nobody has to back into a dumpster to get out. But there are, you know, a number of cars in the neighborhood, parking kind of constraints, particular issues that we just aren't going to know from a drive-by of the street. Though I think, you know, 99.9% of what the issues are, we're going to be able to identify just from a site visit.
Councilmember Wright.
Might be interesting particularly on the permits that, you know, if it's a three-month permit and then has to be renewed, to have a public comment upon renewal, because then people would, if you're, if the contractor or whoever wasn't doing a good job in terms of how they manage the dumpster, it would be an opportunity for people to make their opinions known about that.
And I would argue for one month period with renewal, not longer.
For the pod versus the dumpster or the whole?
All.
Everyone should be 10 days.
Yeah, I think I'd say two weeks on the pod and limit it.
30 days on the dumpster.
And one month on the construction. And on the construction, you want to renew it? Fine. And I like the idea of, you know, making it clear that there's, that it is something like one month and that their public comment is welcome so that if there's a question about how it's working, that that might be addressed in a renewal.
We are talking 20 days a year, so I think it's potentially, we're able to handle it. But when you talk, you know, when we're looking at a six-month period or maybe down to three months, now you're talking one month, if we have to, prior to the 30-day period, notify the contiguous neighbors, it may get a little administratively challenging.
I can see where it's just the process and there's some sign that says, you know, if you have a problem with this, it's a 30-day renewal period, you know, send us your comments. And if they want to renew, we'll have your comments. But not having to go out and be proactive in soliciting them, just make it clear in the process.
When the first goes in and put that sign up.
You know, they've got a 30-day period, if there's something about it you don't like, and they're going to go for another, you think they might go for a renewal? Give us your comments.
The way it starts.
Any other comments? Do you have enough to go on? Come back with some, I assume you're going to come back with some options, maybe, you know, a proposal and some options within the proposal?
Yeah, yeah, draft code language.
And you'll have it ready next week?
Don't think so. Well, we'll let this marinate a while.
Thanks, Jen.
Our last item is a discussion of the process for selection of a ward six council member to fill an expired term of our so far unexpired colleague.
About to expire.
And I guess I'll just reiterate the last couple of vacancies that we've had. When Councilmember Elrich resigned because he got elected to the county council, Councilmember Snipper was ran in a special election because that was more than 240 days before the next election. The one prior to that, Councilmember Mazir moved, and that was less than the 240 days before the election. And the council at that point said that we wanted to solicit people who were interested in filling that seat until the next election, and that we made it clear that we would appoint somebody who expressed that they would not be running in that election because the council did not want to be in a position of anointing a successor, but wanted to let the voters of that ward have an open process without an incumbent that was named by the current council. And I would encourage us to use that same process. I'm trying to remember if there was another vacancy in my memory before that. I'm not thinking of it at the moment, but there may have been one.
Councilmember Simmons.
I thought the process we used with Councilmember Mazur when she left was very good. It worked very well and went very smoothly. So I would suggest that we...
It worked very well and went very smoothly, so I would suggest that we model after that.
Any other comments?
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
I guess, I, I think coming up with somebody who would fill the, fill their position, but without, you know, with the understanding that they, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't run, I think it's a great option.
And does the city manager know the timing on putting an announcement in the newsletter?
I think the deadline is this week. Is that correct, Jess?
It's the.
Or next Monday?
Eighteenth.
Okay.
Okay, so that an announcement to alert folks could go in the June newsletter. The, the timing on this, I believe Councilmember Barry will be vacating his seat the end of the month.
Correct.
And we're required to fill it, I believe that May 28th is the date? And so we're required to fill it within 60 days, and that would mean that we would need to fill it by July 27th, which is a Monday. And my hope is that we could fill it much sooner than that. And essentially, what we're looking at is a, is a vacancy of June through the middle of November, and considering that the council takes off the month of August, we're essentially looking at somebody who would be fulfilling that position for about four and a half And I believe we, after we advertised the last time, then we had, I don't know, at least two opportunities for people to come and talk to the council in a council meeting and talk about their interests. We can go that route, we can come up with something else. It would probably be helpful to let people know a general timeframe and a general process to put in the newsletter, so that they knew that people feel like knowing who, who has expressed an interest, I guess it would go to the city clerk, and that we would have some, maybe two, two dates in council meetings, maybe, what? The middle to end of June to interview folks and make a decision and let them know that essentially that would, that would take one of those months and make it so that they would be essentially acting as a council member in July over the recess in August and in September, October, and half of November. Any thoughts or reactions on, on how we, on what we put in the newsletter or whatever else we put out currently, so that we can have as much information as possible? Councilmember Wright.
I didn't have a comment on that. I just wanted to hear from Councilmember Barry. I think he knows best what would serve the interest of his ward, so I'd be interested to hear his perspective on this issue.
Yes, well, thank you. I think, because as I recall, with the replacement for Heather Mazur, I think the idea of giving folks in the ward a chance to come down and talk to you and express their interest and qualifications for the position seems to be the best way to go. I would endorse that.
And I believe that, what, the newsletter should be coming out right around the first of the month? And the, we have, the last council meeting in June is June 22nd, because then we're at the Maryland Municipal League the following week on June 29th. So that would essentially give it, the first is a Monday, so there are three meetings in June after that, the 8th, 15th, and 22nd. We might want to say that we will, we would like to interview people on June 15th and possibly the 22nd as well. And that might give us the opportunity to have two dates available for those who can't make it on one of them. And then hopefully, we could maybe decide on June 22nd, and if not, then it would be when we come back after MML and the Fourth of July, and our next meeting is July 6th.
Do we have a national conference on volunteers and community services in San Francisco?
Councilmember Wright.
If we could also make an effort to publicize it in other, besides the city newsletter and the Gazette, and Tacoma Voice, maybe our fine Gazette reporter would do a feature article on the topic also.
We might be able to contact him and convince him. Councilmember Robinson.
I have a question about the interim wording, or what I think I've heard is that we would ask that somebody serve as an interim council member.
Yes.
And that has been done before.
Mm-hmm.
And we take it on, if they say, yes, I will only serve in this position as an interim thing, we just take them at their word and that's that.
Yep. And if they change their mind and say, oh, never mind, I'm going to run anyway, then we make it clear that they went back on their word.
We boo and hiss.
We boo and hiss, that's right. That's about as far as it goes.
Yep.
Just checking.
Does the clerk have a comment?
I, well, I do have a question. And so in the advertisement, would you like me to specifically say that it's the council's intention to select someone who is not interested in running for office?
Yes.
That's what you had from Heather.
And that we will attempt to interview people in, in June and name the person in June. It might possibly go over into early July.
With the deadline for applications?
June.
Before the, the.
12th, June 12th.
So.
Does that sound good to people?
Do they get to go to, they don't get to go to MML?
No.
If you want to decide to leave, we come back.
No. Well, I, I guess it's possible if we decided on the 22nd and there was space and they wanted to go.
Would it make sense to have them?
I don't know.
Would it make sense to have them go to experience, to kind of help them come up to speed? And if so, then it might make sense for us to make a point of making a decision before MML, in the event that they wanted to go.
Any other thoughts on that? Any thoughts from the city manager in terms of expenditures?
I think the biggest problem is just that I don't. We would have either had to commit to paying for a room or releasing a room reservation far before that date. I, I think it's probably the biggest potential problem.
Why don't we, why don't we hold in reserve that if we, if we do name someone before that and they are interested, we'll find a way to make it happen. They can double up, something can happen. They can come down for a day or two, there's onsite registration. We'll manage.
That sounds good.
Once they see all the excitement of MML, it's going to make them go back on their promise not to run.
Yeah, that's true. Any other comments? Any other questions? Okay, we're adjourned.